Make sure you have him balanced at the next meeting.
Yeah, definitely. Make a motion for the consent of the county. Most of us got TV second. Second by Sabrina Mason, all the flowers say aye. All opposed, seven no. We've got Ray Beardsley here. He's gonna give us some presentation.
Thank you, sir. It's that time of year where we have to do that silly budget. You remember, there is a budget by law, we have to pass every year. Requirement, it doesn't, it's not the budget you're held to, that you do turn in in September to ABSCAP. That's the critical budget that you have to turn in the Department of Ed. So... Budget information is... Fourth page back is the motion, and I'll show you what we're approving after the next page over from the motion. This is the budget, it's a two-year out budget, hence requirement of law. So this is the twenty-five, twenty-six budget, isn't that crazy? We have to do a two-year out budget, but it has no meaning, but that's a requirement. The first six numbers in the budget... Sorry, next, this one right here. This is a paper there, I apologize. So the first six numbers are the same numbers you ran in the paper last year. That's what we usually do historically, is use the same numbers. But seven and eight are actual numbers, it's your actual non-bonded debt payment and your actual bonded debt payment. And so that's the, for the year twenty-five, twenty-six. And then what we tell the voters is you currently have forty-six mills, and that's made up of twenty-seven debt mills and nineteen... Twenty-seven M and O, excuse me, and nineteen debt mills, for a total of forty-six mills. And that key thing, we're telling the voters, the total proposed school tax levy of forty-six mills represents the same rate presently being levied. In other words, no village increase, no change, no bond, nothing. This is, of course, for the November election, when you do your board races, and this is when we'll do this. Next page is the same information, and this is the sample ballot we give to the county clerk. And so the top information shows you two positions that has no meaning, that is, will be filled in by the county clerk. The bottom is what they're looking for from us, and that is your tax information. And it's the same information again, forty-six total mills, made up of twenty-seven M and O and nineteen debt mills. So, Mr. President, I had certain questions of more to add related to this, and then the motion, as I said, is the fifth page back. England School District suggested motion for the tax levy of July one, twenty-twenty-five to June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six.
The adoption of tax, proposed budget exists of the tax levy, year July first, twenty-twenty-five to include in July, June thirty, twenty-twenty-six, and include by the related seventy bucks.
Second by Mr. Mason, all the flowers say aye. All opposed, seven no.
Thank you, Mr. President, and then I have our current financial advisory agreement with the district running out. As you know, we don't charge anything for this service, we feel it's a very important service that we offer the district. We've been with you about forty years, we really appreciate your business. The only time we have an opportunity to make a fee is if, and when you do a bondage, you, our fee schedule's attached, it hasn't changed in twenty years. It's the same fee schedule you're currently under, and we're just asking you to approve our extension of our three-year financial advisory agreement. And the motion's on the front, Mr. President.
And the most important part, security, Beardsley had financial advisor for a period of three years effective the date of Dobson. Second.
Second.
Second by Miss Sully, all the flowers say aye. All opposed, seven no.
Thank you, Mr. President.
What about that Lacy bill in the bag?
This is showing you. You have two choices, either march or... Center, a sign below you. That's what I'm saying, a sign below you there. Um, can you talk before about doing another finance workshop? If you want to do that, I can send down some dates, let y'all pick. Okay, I'll send some superintendent and... Thank y'all so much, good to see y'all, and I'll send some dates. Appreciate y'all.
Next up are the principal reports, Ms. Tammy.
June enrollment, I left the same as May enrollment, which was at three fifty-five. We're still currently enrolling pre-k kindergarten, so I don't have an updated June enrollment for you. Summer updates with the building, our summer to-do list I've started, bathrooms and classroom maintenance and cleaning is a high priority for us at this time. Technology updates, Chromebooks are being cleaned and updated, Mr. Bryson's been working on that. Scheduling for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, schedules are being made and updated. Elementary is still looking for a certified self-contained special ed teacher. Class assignment letters have been mailed out, and most students should have gotten those by now, with the exception of kindergarten, because we're still currently enrolling. Closer to the beginning of school, we'll have those class letters out. And then summer cheer camp starts tomorrow, and that's sponsored through EYAA, but it's being held at the elementary. So we're just working this summer to get things updated, cleaned and ready for the new school year.
High school report, we had to type on last month's report, I think, the numbers. Our current enrollment is actually two-hundred-and-fifty-seven, so that's our apologies, I'll report that number incorrectly last month. Rollover is planned for tomorrow, and we have a few new student registration packets for the upcoming year. Semester tests were held at EHS, May twenty-eighth to thirty-first. May thirty-first was our last school day for staff and students, and we had a lunch catered to the entire district by the spot. Report cards were lilled home to students during the first week of June. Volleyball, basketball, and football teams have all started practice so far this summer. Coach Mackey and the girls' basketball team hosted a P B camp June thirteenth, fifteenth, they had a good turnout this year. The senior boys are currently eight and zero so far this summer, participate in three team camps. And England High School finished this year strong in literacy, reading over forty-seven million words toward the gap.
Next item is the federal programs approval. This is the A R F and the input information that we will have to sign off on. Basically, it says that we're going to follow the rules that are set forth under the E S C A of nineteen sixty-five. The E S S A of two thousand fifteen, and the I D A on the special ed laws. And we can go through it if you need to, but basically it says that we are, we're giving them assurance with our signature that we are going to follow the law, federal law, and...
We have a sign on she was...
Yes, I got it, I got it.
Is there a standard motion on it or not?
Yes, I'm seeking a motion to approve our federal programs, A R F assurances and G E P A statements.
Do we make a motion?
Motion.
Motion, Mr. Beadley, second. Second by Mr. Mason, all the flowers say aye. All opposed, seven no.
Next is Act eleven oh five of two thousand seventeen. It's a resolution. Uh, this resolution is to comply with Act eleven oh five of the two thousand seventeen regular legislative session regarding the twenty percent carryover balance. The board authorizes a superintendent and district treasurer to move any amount above six-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-dollar ending balance to, in the two thousand funds, to the building fund after the categorical and restricted funds are first deducted from the ending balance. So, any amount over, that's six-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars, it can be moved.
How do we make that move? Most of us got TV second.
Second.
Second by Miss Sully, all the flowers say aye. All opposed, seven no.
Next item, we have two petitions for transfer, total three students, two families. One is coming from Long Oak, the other is pending release from Plask County Special School District. Long Oak has already signed the release, I have done the due diligence and investigated, they're not under any expulsion or anything like that. And this, uh, so I recommend that we accept these students into our district.
Plask and Long Oak or?
One of them is from Long Oak, and the other two are from Plask County Special.
Have any of the students ever been at the Kingland School District before?
I don't think so.
I'll make the most approved transfer. Most of us got TV second. Second by Mr. Chris Carter Lewis, all the flowers say aye. All opposed, seven no. We got a signature before we start, we gotta sign something on that, so we... We gotta sign a release, I'll do that decision. Yeah, my later sign on, please.
Yeah.
All right, the next are quotes that we received. Uh, the first one is from Apogee, uh, it's a subscription renewal. Uh, it's a communications tool, runs our website, our alert system, uh, things like that. Uh, it's paid out of federal funds, it is eight thousand, eight hundred and eighteen dollars and nine cents.
So good, no problem.
So far, so good.
Want to make a motion?
Make their motion.
Most of us got Mr. Tucker, any second. Second by Mr. Beadley, all the flowers say aye. All opposed, seven no.
So, the next one is the Arkansas Insurance Public School Vehicle Insurance Plan, Arkansas Insurance Department. Uh, it's eleven thousand, nine hundred and eighty-four dollars for vehicle insurance, this will be district funds, and I think this has gone down from last year.
It covers the buses and everything.
Or the road, yes. And it has gone down, but I think we'll, we have one bus less this year to cover, that's right?
Do we make a motion? That covers the tractor, little tractor too.
He says right. He's got the tractor.
Motion by Mr. Beadley, second. Second by Miss Mason, all the flowers say aye. All opposed, seven no.
Next one, Arkansas School Board Association Risk Management.
It's actually gone down from last year, last year was about seventy-two to seventy-four thousand. It went back, it went up a lot last year. And the state did give us a check for like twenty-seven thousand dollars last year to offset the cost. They're not going to do that this year, but it's gone down by about ten to twelve thousand dollars this year from last year.
Property insurance, two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five school year, will be six, sixty-two thousand, five hundred and twenty-four dollars and sixty-eight cents, this will be paid for out of district funds.
Make a motion. Motion by Mr. Beadley, second.
Second.
Second by Miss Sully, all the flowers say aye. All opposed, seven no.
Next one is a quote from Central Bus Sales. We're looking at buying a school bus, two thousand twenty-two, it's got about twenty thousand miles on it. We're looking at a lease purchase option, they gave us a three or five year. Uh, we'll probably need one within three or four more years, so we'd probably need to go with the three-year plan. The Central Bus, uh, sales, the lease purchase for three years is thirty-five thousand, three hundred and nineteen dollars and two cents per year. And that is going to be a total of, that's, that includes interest, but the financed amount is ninety-seven thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars. And I believe this was a seventy-seven, uh, seat bus converted to a seventy-one, so it has a little weight to leg run.
How are we doing on bus?
Are we getting rid of a bus, or selling the bus, or trading in a bus?
Uh, we're probably gonna take one out of rotation, and move one of our trip buses into the rotation, and use this one as a trip bus.
We had one catch fire this year too.
Yeah, that's the one.
Can we get, where at?
We had one catch fire this year.
Can we get mine?
Thirteen thousand four.
That one back in district funds? Close about half, we were, we'll be in half in a year's time. So we gotta have this to make it on the fleet wide or?
We pretty much need this one, uh, if we have any trouble after another one, we're gonna be, we're gonna be short, we're gonna be short.
Do we make that motion? Do you want to do the three-year lease or what?
Yeah, three-year lease, it saves us about ten, twelve thousand dollars somewhere along in there.
So with the lease, anything happens, they'll fix it?
As far as I understand, yes.
What are they using words? Does the lease, I don't write it.
Right, it's lease purchase.
Make a motion.
Make a motion.
Most of us got TV second. Second by Mr. Chris Carter Lewis, all the flowers say aye.
The next one is a quote from the Houghton Mifflin Harcourt Company. Uh, we are required to purchase math textbooks for grades nine through eleven, and it's gotta be district funds. What we found for the curriculum, we're looking at it, is for those grades, those three years, three grades, will cost twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and forty-eight dollars. But that will have to come out of district funds.
It's not being funny, because y'all are done the math, I'm having to leave based on our numbers, the statistics. We got a bunch of them left over or?
No, we won't have a lot left over. Textbooks are very expensive.
Do we make a motion?
Yes, I'll make the motion.
Most of us got TV second. Second by Mr. Music, all the flowers say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, seven no.
The next one is from the same company, Houghton Mifflin Harcourt. Uh, this is for supplementing the math workbooks for the new math curriculum. This, this cost of eleven thousand, nine hundred and fourteen dollars and sixty-four cents will cover the cost of the workbooks for five years. Can be purchased at Title I bonds. Yes.
All right, so we'll make the most approved. You, I mean, Mr. Music, you say. Second by Mr. Mason, all the flowers say aye. All opposed, seven no.
All right, the next one is, uh, a quote from Lexia, uh, for license renewals. Lexia is a computer program platform that our elementary's gonna use for remediation. Uh, formerly they used iStation, this replaces the istation, uh, for literacy RTI. It's eleven thousand, three hundred and thirty-five dollars for these renewals. Yes.
So we're gonna use this right now? Y'all using this now?
This is elementary, yes, they're going, this is replacing the istation that they formed with themselves, they're going with Lexia.
We did a, we did a pilot program the last month of school, trying it out to see if our kids liked it, if our teachers liked it, if we saw growth with our kids. The State Department was paying for our K-two istation, and we were paying for three-six. This coming school year, they're not going to pay for that anymore. So we either had the option to pay for K-six ourselves, or go with a different company. And after we did the pilot program, our teachers voted to go with a different company. So we're gonna try, um, this Lexia instead of istation.
Mr. Beadley, do you have istation?
Um, istation was literacy and math, and we only paid for that three-six. So this is less than the combination, but we were gonna have to pick up. So it costs more, but istation was gonna end up costing more because the state wasn't gonna pay for it anymore. And it's, uh, budgeted out of our federal money, so we've already budgeted for it.
All right, most of us got Mr. Chris Carter Lewis, any second. Second by Mr. Tucker, all the flowers say aye. All opposed, seven no.
Yeah, this, uh, next vote is service, this was table from last month. Uh, this is job embedded coaching for our literacy curriculum for two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five school year, paid out of federal funds. Uh, y'all ask for more, more information on this, so this literature, you give to us.
Um, this is literacy training, it's aligned to our science of reading, using Title V B funds, which means we can only use expenditures that are approved for Title V A, which is highly qualified professional development. We get about twenty thousand dollars, and I can only use it for highly qualified professional development, or we lose it, it's just throw it away. And so this specifically is for our life perspective literacy training that we use for our nonthreel teachers. It's also for I-L-A forty-five, which we use for crit four E one and crit four E two, and our tier two, tier three RTI. And I-L-A ELL, which we use to serve our English language learners. It's, um, been approved already by DESI, I budgeted for it. Um, we can only use it on highly qualified professional development, DESI, they're the ones that deem what's highly qualified, and they can then this is highly qualified.
So is this what we're talking about, if somebody comes down and, and teaches the facilitators, is that right?
No, 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 this has nothing to do with me or the principals. This is curriculum-specific professional development that's specific to the curriculum that we use for my perspectives, I-L-A forty-five and I-L-A ELL. They work on anchor learning, they learn, they work on the digital tools, the online platform, the scope and sequence of the curriculum.
Yeah, we're a little confused, we're trying to figure out.
You can only use this money on highly qualified PD, and DESI says service is highly qualified PD because they're coming and providing curriculum-specific, uh, professional development on their curriculum. This is not us walking in and watching them teach and provide feedback, this is for content-specific curriculum.
So in fact, this is worth the...
Yeah, it's already approved for the last two years, this is the final year of it, this is year three, it has to be, um, sustainable professional development. And he comes in throughout the year, and he provides training on all those programs, I said, in several programs, and services.
So who does he train, he's training the teachers, the kids?
Yeah, he, he works with the teachers that use the program, yes. We have, like, we've already had a high turnover, like, it's because we have a high turnover.
We need him to come in and teach the teachers. Oh, we're...
No, no, he's not, he's teaching the curriculum on how to use it effectively, the assessments, the digital tools, the online platform, all that. It's, it's a three-year process. You can only use this money on highly qualified professional development, and DESI says they are highly qualified. There's like a vendor list, and they say pick one, and we pick service because they provide our literacy for our high school, but not just our literacy.
Who's he teaching the curriculum to?
The teachers, yes, the different teachers. Some, so our classroom teachers, nonthreel, high perspectives, our interventionists, Lexa Melissa Casey, Jerrica Willis, Brett Mau. And then our ELL, um, interventionist, because we have to provide English language learners with a specific content approved by DESI curriculum, this is one. So it's several platforms.
They did one-on-one with them or? He did one-on-one with them or does he do it by?
He comes in, in, into the, he can, he, he can do summer P D, but he's already done that where he comes in and works with them just in the summer to help implement the program. So now he comes in and he works on the actual curriculum. And he works on the anchor learning system. He works on the digital tools, the online platform, the scope and sequence. There is, like, my perspective alone is like five textbooks of all the standards you have to get through, so it's a lot. And he's an expert on it. No one in your district, any school district can be an expert on curriculum or we would have different jobs. And it's federal funds. If you don't spend it on this, it's already been approved by D S E. This is our prior application. It was approved. We don't spend it on this, you lose it. You just throw the twenty thousand away.
I'm confused about what all of them.
Do you want to make a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Chris Carter, you need a second? Second by Mr. Tucker, you need a. All the favors, I. Oppose, seven oh.
And the next one is from S H I. Uh, S H I is a state contract vendor and this payment of five thousand seven hundred fifty-five dollars and eighty-six cents will be for our yearly Microsoft license renewal. And we can use federal funds on this because we teach this in our business classes.
In district funds.
It's district.
Well, that should be federal funds, huh?
It's district.
It's district?
Yeah, because we teach it in our classes, so we have to pay. It's like buying textbooks essentially, because that's what they teach in our business classes.
I am sorry, that's still be district funds.
It's just our anchor learning.
Do you want to make a motion? Second by Miss Mason, all the favors, I. Oppose, seven oh. Question, I'll. Seven twenty-four.
Twenty-four.
Two and three dollars?
Uh, I'm seeking a motion to accept the resignation of Trent Morgan as assistant tennis coach.
I'll make that motion. I'll make that.
Motion by Miss Sully, it's taken by Mr. Music, all the favors, I.
He moved to the bank so you could see.
I'm seeking a motion to accept the resignation of Tiffany Thompson as elementary special ed teacher.
Motion by Mr. Music, you need a second? Second by Mr. Tucker, all the favors, I. Oppose, seven oh.
I'm seeking a motion to hire Tammy Roberts as literacy interventionist and dyslexia specialist.
Scott, you don't call the motion, huh?
Uh, anybody make a motion, Tammy Roberts? Seven oh.
Motion.
Second. Second, all in favor, say aye. Oppose.
I would keep.
I would take it, I can't count.
All right, uh, I'd make a motion to hire Darius Clarkson as long-term sub, assistant softball coach, assistant tennis coach. All contingent upon certification.
Just gonna make that motion. Motion by Mr. Beauty, you need a second? Second by Miss. All the favors, I. Oppose, seven oh.
Seeking a motion to hire Charles Chatten as head softball coach.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Miss Sully, you need a second?
Second.
Second by Miss Mason, all the favors, I. Oppose, seven oh.
I'm seeking a motion to add one thousand dollars to Blake Benson's uh current contract for assistant junior high football. This was omitted when the contract was drafted.
To the fourth quarter. So I'll make that motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Beauty, you need a second?
Second.
Second by Miss Sully, should be, all the favors, I. Oppose, seven oh.
I'm seeking a motion to add fifteen hundred dollars stipend to Kathy Barnett's contract for the high school secretary, app, app scan stipend.
Want to make a motion? Motion by Mr. Chris Carter, you need a second? Second, Mr. Music, all the favors, I. Oppose, seven oh. Want to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll do that.
Motion by Mr. Tucker, you need a second?
Second.
All the favors, I. Oppose, seven oh.